Call the meeting to order. Thursday, May 11th. This is our special meeting, public work session. You'll please stand for a moment of silence, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I will read the mission statement. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for attendance, please?
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson.
Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Reverend Patullo.
Present.
Dr. Witterberg.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Parent.
Present.
Seven members present, two members absent.
I want to make it, I'd like to recommend a change tonight for the agenda, to move 4.1, which is the presentation of the PBS Risk Management Program. Mr. Bart Johnson is here from Bay Corp, Risk Management Specialist. I would like to move that under 4.1, under the 2.6 before we go into close meeting.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. And second.
And bless you.
And bless you. Is there any discussion about the amended agenda? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Dr. Tracy, you are.
Yes, sir.
Mr. George, you're going to be introduced.
Yes, yes. Ms. George will introduce Mr. Johnson at this time, please.
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, all school board members. Tonight we have Mr. Bart Johnson. He is our Risk Management Specialist. He worked with us with our renewal and guiltless recommendations concerning our workers' compensation general liability program. At this time, I ask Mr. Bart Johnson to come forth for the presentation.
Good evening, school board, school administration, everyone else.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a handout coming out that includes the slides. There's a couple slides in here where the numbers might not be legible on the screen, so you can look on the paper and see them clearly. I'll wait until they get around. As Brittany mentioned, my name's Bart Johnson. I'm a Risk Management Specialist with Bay Corp, which stands for the Virginia Association of Counties Risk Pool. Prior to joining Bay Corp, I was the Risk Manager for James City County as well as Williamsburg, James City County Schools for the last 15 years, 2014 going back. The pool is designed, it's member-owned, providing comprehensive insurance coverages for cities, counties, schools, government agencies, those sorts of things, anything with a governmental type of affiliation. We have over 400 members of all those types of entities, which gives us buying power for reinsurance into our coverages. The pool as itself does not cover the full risk, only up to certain financial limits, and then we purchase reinsurance on top of that. These policies are manuscriptated, which is a very important element. By manuscriptating, we look at a school and we decide what are the risks that face a school, and we put those into a single policy, as opposed to having to go out and buy individual policies and layering them up. And we do the same thing. We have a slightly different policy for schools than we do for other governmental agencies like counties and cities. We also additional savings through what we call dual-program discount and dividend rate credits. The dual-program, if a member, a county, a school, a city, has both their workers' comp and their property casualty with us, they will get a 5% discount on that property casualty. We'll actually see that as it applies to the schools. This is a map of all the schools that we are currently members of Bay Corp in the state. Some of those others that aren't might be, you know, some of the larger ones are completely self-insured, just purchased reinsurance. But we do have the majority of schools in the state. I'll give you a quick overview of your program now. That would be on the third page, I believe that you have. So if you go down the left-hand column, you see the different coverages. They include property, inland marine, computers, electronics, equipment, general liability, educators' legal liability, automobile, crime, excess liability, environmental, cyber, and workers' compensation. If you look at your property, that's the largest single insurance cost that you have on your. Schools are expensive, I don't have to tell you that. Any other key one of schools is very, very expensive. Inland marine, no, you don't have any boats. Inland marine refers to mobile pieces of equipment that you may have, like a forklift or something like that, so there's a minimal coverage on that. Computers and electronic data processing, that's pretty self-explanatory. Equipment breakdown, if you ever had a school like Norcom that went through that flood, even though they stayed in operation, but if they had a shutdown, you have coverage there for the equipment that breaks down. General liability, that's primarily for wrongful-type acts that are, that, you know, the school may create, a person generates a claim against you. The educator's legal liability, that's more for sexual harassment, wrongful termination, those types of professional acts that you may be held by before. The automobile is pretty straightforward. You'll notice in the deductible category, this says no comp or collision. With this renewal coming up in July, you're going to be adding that comprehensive and collision coverage to your automobile operations. Crime, excess liability, it's important to note that under the general liability and the excess liability, you have a combined limit of $10 million covered behind you, which for a school system, I think, is more than adequate, and you're in good shape. And that covers over today. Educators' legal liability has that same limit. Environmental liability, that is, you know, any of your fueling operations for your transportation, if you have a bus that may be involved in an accident, have a spill or something of that. Cyber risk, we're going to talk a little bit more about that in the next couple slides. We realize that as we store more and more electronic data in our computer systems, that they're vulnerable for hacking and, you know, illegal release of that data. So we automatically include a $500,000 limit. The thing to note about that $500,000 limit is there is a $75,000 sub-limit for notification. And if you follow any of the news, whenever there's been a release of information, most expensive part of that claim is the notification of people that their data has been released, and then offer credit monitoring if they ask for it. That's the most important, the expensive part of a claim. So we'll talk about what we can do to increase that for you as well. And then finally, the workers' comp coverage. You'll see that. Now, if you notice going down, you'll see there's various deductibles. On the property, there's a $25,000 deductible. We'll take a look, second, at the types of claims that you've had over the years. Inland marine, the equipment, the computers, all at $1,000. The educators' legal liability's at $25,000. Same with environmental. But on the workers' comp, you have a $500,000 limit. So that means that you pay any of those claims up to that limit, and then we would take over on top of that. Right, but if you look down, you look at the total annual contribution, and then you'll see that dual-program discount if applicable. So that's over $40,000 credit that you get on that total. On the next page, it's a breakout on the workers' compensation.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson. I have a question on the first page. Under special, is that including all the perils on top of the broad coverage? So is the standard as a basic property casualty policy, under special, the perils that it covers?
Yes, it's all those included under what would be considered.
Except for the war, the riots, okay.
So the workers' comp, you can see that a school system really only has three codes. If you think about what the city of Portsmouth have, they may have 15 to 20 codes of different type categories. You give us the estimated payroll that you expect for the year, and we multiply it by a rate, and we come up with the manual premium. So you can see that, you know, your teachers are the most expensive as far as payroll, but also the lowest as far as the rate. .25 is a really very, very low rate. It's probably even lower than the clerical rate. I think the clerical rate might be at a .26 or somewhere up there. So our teachers are really a very good risk when it comes to workers' compensation. And then the various others. So what we do is we come up with that manual amount. Since you have that high deductible, we don't apply an experience modification, but we do give you a premium discount, and then the scheduled debit credit, that's where we take into account that $500,000 deductible. We give you that credit for that. So you come up, and your total estimated annual contribution is $81,280 in workers' comp premium. So you pay for all those claims under $500,000, and then you pay that premium of $81,000 on top of that. So that was a quick summary of your coverages under workers' compensation and property and casualty. Yes, yes. Workers' compensation is, for a compensable workers' comp claim, it includes lost wages for up to 10 years, and it includes lifelong medical treatment relating to that injury. All right, so if we look at the, you know, your property and casualty losses over the last seven years, you'll see that generally very, very good, considering the size of your operation. General liability, fairly low, just miscellaneous claims, last two years, there had been no claims that had been paid out, maybe claims made, but nothing where you've been found responsible. Under auto liability, it's a little bit of a different story. We've got higher incidences up here. This would be where you may have backed into another vehicle, or damaged someone's property with one of your buses or your other vehicles. Those would be the total, you know, paid over those years. Now, the property has been very good. It's not to say that you haven't had small property losses under $25,000 that a claim has not submitted. You may have incurred those. But the first real claim we had was back in October after Hurricane Matthew. We had some flooding at Norcom High School, and to date, that's what we paid on that claim. I think there are still some more bills coming in. And that's what property insurance is all about. West Taven Elementary School is where we had them.
Yeah, I was wondering what happened with West Taven.
Oh, okay. My mistake. All right, let's take a look at what the workers' comp's been doing. This is the total incurred workers' comp cost over the years. So that includes everything that we paid on the claim, workers' comp, or lost wages, medical bill payments, and it also includes the reserves that we have on that claim. Whenever we have a claim that comes in, we evaluate the potential cost of that claim, and we establish a reserve amount in the claim system to pay for that claim. When the claim closes, if there are any remaining reserves, they get canceled out. But at the time that we report things to the rating bureau and things like that, those reserves are included. So these numbers do reflect total incurred, which includes reserves. So what can we see here? Back from 2006 to 2010, it was kind of up and down. Over the last six years, the results have been very good and very low, which is, you know, a positive trend. When we look at expected versus actual workers' comp loss, if you remember when I showed you that workers' comp workup, that manual contribution of 437, that's what the losses, the expected losses are. We look at all our schools, we come up with a rate, we have to submit it to the state, they approve it, and that's based on what the average losses are for that category. So we know that, you know, for the drivers, 3.87 cents, that's going to be good for a driver. So these are what the school's losses have been compared to the expected losses. You can see the trend is actually very, very good. In most cases, below what is expected by almost 50%. All right, so one question that Brittany and some other folks have asked me about, how much money should we set aside for those deductible payments that we're going to have to pay? Now, obviously, the most important one is on the workers' comp. So we know we're going to be, you know, anywheres from $200,000 to $300,000, even more. What I always tell people is evaluate annual average loss amounts. When we looked at those graphs, we can see that we are now in a consistent pattern that is fairly low. Look for trends in costs, you know, with claims, do we have, you know, look how they stratify as far as dollar amounts. That's what we do at Bay Corp, and then make recommendations. Determine your tolerance for risk. Are you willing to take a chance, go with averages, or, you know, do you want to have enough money in that reserve fund no matter what happens? And then establish plans for exceeding fund balances. I told Brittany up at James City County, we carried $100,000 deductible on our auto and our general liability. And I used to keep a little bit of extra funds in my insurance budget. In the 15 years I was there, I only had to go to the board supervisors twice to get money for covering a claim. And it was two automobile accidents where we were at fault, and the costs were high. But based on the premium savings that we had by carrying those deductibles over that period of time, we saved close to $1 million. So it was a good thing to do. So if we take a closer look at workers' comp, these are your losses on workers' comp from the year 2000 up to 2016, which is the last complete full year. So what I did here was I took the average of what those are over those 16 years, and that average comes up to $463,365 as an average total incurred workers' comp cost per year. My recommendation would be, that's the number that we use for establishing that reserve fund for workers' compensation. Now, if you go up and look a little bit higher, there are years when you've been at $800,000. Yeah, yeah. When I looked at the claims closely, you normally had the same number of claims, but during those years that you had that higher number, there was at least one or maybe two very bad claims. You've been avoiding the very bad claims. Now, the next six years, the odds are, we probably will have another very bad claim, unfortunately, and that might spike up. So it's something to consider. You have to, you know, think about what your tolerance is for that. A little bit more on that, when I said I had to go to our board of supervisors to get money, we had a reserve reserve fund, a special needs fund, and that's where I would go to get that money. I'm assuming, hopefully, the school has something like that as well. Just be aware that over the periods of year, if you keep that average number in there, you may have to tap that at some point, and just, you know, be aware of that. But we also have to think about our property deductible as well. Now, we haven't had claims for many years, but we had this recent one. So that's $25,000 out of the insurance fund that you're going to have to cover. I told Brittany, I don't know where all those other small-type claims are going, if that's coming out of an insurance budget, or if it's coming out of facilities budget. So you need to determine those things as well. But now you're going to also have your property or your collision and comp coverage on the automobiles with a $2,500 deductible on each one, so it's the same thing. Would transportation be paying those claims under $2,500, or will it be coming out of the insurance fund? If they're going to come out of the insurance fund, then I would recommend adding probably, oh, you know, $100,000 to $125,000 additional to that 463, just to cover those costs, thinking that you might have a property claim or something like that. So hopefully that gives you some guidance on those reserves for the, any questions about that?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and dive into the. You may, or you may not know that the, excuse me, that the city of Portsmouth has recommended that the school board and the city merge their risk management. When we met with them, the mayor pulled out the CAFRA report and indicated that there was $4.9 million, and Brittany, you can correct me on the numbers that I remember, but 2.8 we had for healthcare, and then we had about $2 million. What they're saying to us is that we've overfunded. We've overfunded. So you can take that money and you can, because we're not, they've given us level funding, so we're trying to get a raise for teachers. And they're saying, well, you've overfunded risk management, so why don't you take that money that you have in surplus and use it for salaries? Well, I mean, you've just talked about, you just talked about all the risk, and my question to you is that, since there's been a lot of discussion between the city manager and the mayor and the school board, is it your recommendation, or would you recommend that the school board and the city merge their risk management? And, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what we've, that's really what we've been, I don't want to use the word "battle," that's what we've been discussing, and the discussion is they don't understand why we don't merge, because it will, you know, we'll have our money, they'll have their money, and one, the city will run it, and we won't have to worry about it, and we can take the surplus, and we can, we can give the teachers the raise. But what I'm hearing from our people is that that is not, that is not your recommendation.
No, it's not. Okay. We learned about it several weeks ago as well. And we actually looked into what it would entail. Two completely different risks. You know, the school system is a far better risk from a property and casualty and workers' comp than the city's. You know, and it's not to say that they're not doing a good job, but when you have things like public safety and public works and things like that, high-risk jobs, on the public safety side, well, on the city and the county, overall, for all our claims, about 65% of the frequency and about 64% of the severity, the number and the dollars come out of public safety. It's not a good mix, you know, to combine schools with a governmental entity like that. There really are no financial incentives to do it either way. You know, the workers' comp rate would go up, you know, and then we have to think about how we're, if you just, you know, about that dual-program credit, we don't have the property and casualty on the city. They are actually not Bay Corp members. We provide a TPA service for them, so, you know, it doesn't work for a number of reasons. I truly, I like the way this school system is operating with their insurance, the way I see the trending going. And we're going to talk about a few things that you've been doing, which I truly think account for that. So my recommendation, Bay Corp's recommendation, is stay at court. Stay separate. Board nurse, Reverend Patullo.
And when you say that you are doing the research, does that include your underwriters also?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I just hear you say correctly that Bay Corp is also part of, does the city's part too, but a different kind of?
Yes, 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 yes. They are.
They're not members.
Yeah, they're not, they're not members, so they, they're not, they can't take advantage of that dual-program credit. We provide third-party administration, claims adjusting services on our workers' comp, period. That's what we do. So we, they pay us a fee to adjust each claim depending on the type, and then they pay the claim and purchase reinsurance.
Now, Brittany, you can correct me on these numbers. We took the 4.9, we backed out the 2.8 for health insurance, which left us about $2 million, about $2 million. They're saying we can take that $2 million, which is our general liability and our workman's comp, and we can use that money to pay for the raises. And all, and we said, well, what happens if we have a catastrophic event and we, excuse me, we drain the swamp? And then we, but they're, they're saying that we are overfunded in risk management. And that's what I don't understand, is that how are we overfunded in risk management with these particular figures?
Well, this, overfunded, I would just say that you've had good years, and then you have an excess as a result of that. Are you overfunded? I can't comment on that, because we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow.
Right.
You know, that's the principle of insurance. We prepare for the unexpected.
Well, we can't levy taxes, the board can't levy taxes, so we have to go to the city for the appropriation. So in the event that we, I mean, this board decides, in the event that they might decide, well, we'll just take $1 million, and we'll, we'll use it for raises, to give the raises for one-time expense. But then what happens in 2019, 2020, and then we have these catastrophic events, or we have, I mean, we have a year like 2011, and we don't have enough funds like you guys did, and you all had to go to your governing body to?
You know, the limit on the, on the, the workers' comp, when I went back and looked at all your claims.
Yes, sir.
You never had one over $500,000, which is your deductible level. There wasn't one. There were a couple of like $480, and they were the bad ones, so, yeah.
Well, I hated to put you on the spot, but, you know, we, we're constantly being asked that there's no reason, there's no reason why we shouldn't do it. And we're saying that.
Well, I said, you know, let's, let's use the average for the workers' comp, and let's put another $100,000 to $125,000, $150,000 total to cover the property, the auto, those deductibles, and that would probably, I would feel comfortable if I was making that insurance decision for the schools. But then I'd also want to know that I've got someplace else, or when that hurricane comes on the coast, or we have a very bad workers' comp claim, you know, we have a bad school bus accident, that we're going to have those funds available to cover that unexpected but tragic-type loss.
So Brittany, we've got 600,000, I mean, we've got $2 million in our fund balance, right? All right. So he's saying that if we take the 463, add another $100,000, that would put us close to 600,000.
Yeah, the 26, 65.
Yeah, between 650.
So that's, that, so that would, that would cover any, but then you don't know above that, what, you know, the hurricane could come, or something can come. I mean, I guess that's where they're getting that we're overfunded.
Your biggest, your biggest driver is going to be the workers' comp. You're going to have a couple of bad claims on the workers' comp. That would be...
Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. What's the, the maximum per occurrence that we have? So per occurrence, what's the maximum payout?
For what type of claim?
For a property. What's the maximum payout per occurrence?
It would be whatever the schedule is on the building, the value on the building. Like theoretically, you could have a total loss. You could have a building burned down. And recently, I'm not sure if we've done it here, but we, we have, we have property specialists on our staff that go out and look at the high-value dollars to make sure you have them properly insured in case you do have that total loss.
Okay.
But I have to be honest, there've been occasions where the building was valued at a certain level, but it was, the, the total loss was higher, and we covered it. So we just, we want to see a good faith effort when you report your values. And then if you ever have any questions, we can send out our property specialists to make sure we have a proper...
So if we took that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then on the workers' compensation deductible, since we haven't had any claims over $500,000, then we're actually coming out of the pocket for the claims.
Correct.
So wouldn't it be beneficial to have a lower deductible, so we won't have that much out of pocket?
Well, then you'd be paying more in premium.
You would be paying more in premium, but you would be saving. Your insurance should work for you. So we're actually coming out of pocket more and not having that lower deductible.
So are you saying, I'm just pointing to Brittany, are we, are we saying that we have, based on his projections, that we have roughly $1.2 to $1.4 million over what we, what we, what we need? Is that where the city's coming from?
Well, no, I can't, I can't speak from where the city's coming from.
Understand.
But if...
When they keep talking about overfunded, I just need to...
I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, all right.
But if we are comfortable setting a fund balance reserve at 650, then it would be $1.3 million.
Okay.
But if, that is not our comfort level. I mean, that, that's what it boils down to.
Right. Okay. Does the board, because that's, I think that's where the discussion is coming from, from the city. All right. Yes, Reverend Patel.
Just to say, to, I, when I get back, I will ask our underwriters to do a, another option on the workers' comp, maybe at, you know, $400, $300,000 deductible, just to see what those premiums do. So it'll give you a comparison.
Reverend Patel.
I just wanted to clarify. I believe what the city is stating is two different things. They were talking about merging...
Right.
...risk management.
Correct.
And they were talking about a separate issue of being overfunded.
Right. It is.
And it's the recommendation of Bay Corp that we do not merge...
Correct.
...risk management.
What were they referring to as risk management as well?
The general liability and workers' comp.
The insurance coverage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, not the health at this point.
Like, again, up in James City County, we shared risk management, which was myself and a safety professional that did the same for both entities. But we both had separate workers' comp and property and casualty policy.
Right, right.
So, so pretty much what you're saying is that the only benefit to that agreement was having a compliance officer that shared.
Right.
Okay. Now, the second part of it is the overfunded statement, but that's totally different from merging...
Right, I understand, right.
...our risk management.
Exactly.
So that has nothing to do with the city.
No, I understand. Because once upon a time, we had one department, and we paid our part, and they paid their part, and we had a compliance officer, and they, they took care of all the claims. Any other comments before we finish? Okay, go ahead.
Some of the strategies that you've implemented already that we're going to continue to explore, but company nurse is a way that the workers' comp and shootings are reported. When a, when a employee is injured, there's an 800 number. They call in and speak to a registered nurse who triages over the phone the best they can, and then directs that employee, if they need medical treatment, to your panel of physicians. What that does is, a couple of things. It gets our school nurses away from treating employees. When I implemented that up in Windsor, the nurses were so happy. They felt so uncomfortable giving advice to staff members about medical treatment. So that's number one. Number two, we can keep people out of the emergency room, and that can be very, very valuable. You know, when you think about going to see a primary care physician on an initial basis, it's much less expensive than going through an emergency room and getting evaluated. So that definitely has cut down on costs, is using that company nurse. The deductibles, you know, we continue to look at those levels and see what we can do. As a result of this meeting and comments about the workers' comp, we'll get some other options on the workers' comp deductible level, so you can make better decisions. On the safety, the risk management side, we like to meet with our principals at the start of the year, get their support. We have two types of training that is available, all, at no additional cost. It all comes as part of your premium. Safe Teachers is an online training course that is available to all your, it's really, it's more than Safe Teachers. There's five modules in there. It includes education, it includes transportation, it includes food service, custodial, and facilities. So that's available online. It includes things like first aid and CPR, which I think all our teachers have to go through on a semi-annual or a couple-year basis. So they can do that online now. At the comfort, they don't have, you know, any, they could be at home on their computer. They get a login if you teach an hour. The other is our in-service training. We have a, two school specialists, Chris Ballard's one. He's been down multiple times at the beginning of the year to meet with your, your transportation, as well as your custodial facilities group in a joint meeting to do in-service training with those folks. So those types of things help develop a safe atmosphere, and people make better decisions about the work they're doing to stay safer. In the future, we're talking about evaluation of workers' comp funding. You know, that will certainly improve your budget. We're going to look at some additional deductibles, I should say, lower deductibles on the workers' comp and see if not, it wouldn't increase the premium savings, but may decrease the overall cost. So we'll take a look at that. Student accident insurance is a coverage that we have available to all our school members. You know, when, when you think about the healthcare plans that are out there today, the high deductible levels, student gets injured and the parents don't think much of it until they get that bill that comes in. It's $700, $800, and they say, and I don't have the money to pay for that. Student accident insurance is a good way to help them out with that. So please be considering that. And then I mentioned cybergrids. Is that enough coverage?
Sure.
$500,000 with the $75,000 supplement? I don't know. We have members that go to a seminar, and they come back, and they want more coverage. So if you, if you elect that $1 million, you know, up to $1 million, that sublimit goes away. So you can spend the entire $1 million on certification and credit.
Thank you.
That's the end of my presentation. Any questions or comments?
Board members, you have any questions you'd like to ask? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is that we're going into closed, closed session, and...
I move that board, that the board enter a closed meeting under provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: One, consideration of student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection 8.2; and two, consideration of personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1.
Second.
Motion for the red. Second, any discussion? Hear no discussion. Madam clerk?
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parr.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
We are now in closed session. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year 2016-17. George?
This is just a final approval for the categorical adjustment that was sent to the city, and they passed it on April 25th.
Okay. Madam clerk, roll call vote.
She needs to make a motion.
Ms. Allen.
Need a motion.
Yes.
Didn't get a motion.
Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
The motion is consideration.
She's...
Of our thousand budget for fiscal year 2016.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Miss Williams said yes.
No, yeah.
The motion we're voting on is the consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year 2016-2017. That's the motion. Move for approval.
Second.
And then we, I kind of jumped the gun. Pardon me. So we've all voted, and it voted...
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I heard revised budget. I say yes.
All right. 4.4. This is roll call vote. Consideration of the appointment of members to the MWBE Advisory Committee. Dr. Bracy, right in your court.
No discussion to be added.
Yeah, the information, there's nothing else to add. The information is in your package.
Do I have a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second?
Question, please.
Call for the question. Reverend Doyle.
I was wondering why do we have Bruce Williams from Transformation Consulting on the MWBE committee?
I can answer that. Bruce is no longer with Transformation, so.
Yeah, he could be on. He's no longer with Transformation. He's just a regular citizen. I mean, I thought when I read it, I...
I didn't see anything.
We don't pay him anything, do we?
But yeah, he's, he's no longer with Transformation.
He's separated.
Oh, he's no longer with the company.
Yeah, he's separated. Yeah, separated.
On company. We didn't have that contract.
So there's no conflict of interest for Doyle. Motion's been made. Second, call for question. Madam clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Nope.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Reverend Patel.
No.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parr.
Yes. Now that's clarified, I mean, now that person's clarified.
Yeah, now that's clarified.
Okay. All right. Next item, roll calls. Consideration to increase grant appropriation submission to city council. Dr. Bracy.
We have.
Yes, I'm sorry.
She's got it.
This is a request to increase our grant appropriation for our FEMA project related to the renovation of the West Haven classroom due to Hurricane Matthew.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hear no discussion. Madam clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parr.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Next item is 4.6. Roll call vote. Consideration of contract number RFP number 912-P-1617 for facility study with pre-construction and other base services. Dr. Bracy. George, move for approval.
Second.
Ms. George?
Okay, it is what he did.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Hear no discussion. Madam clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parr.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
4.7. Consideration to utilize the Reulman Brothers and Company awarded cooperative contracts to purchase marching band uniforms, performing arts apparel and services. Move for approval. Second. Motion made. And second, any discussion? Mrs. Hines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, I'm going to ask the question about encumbrances, because we are going to push our 220, because it says right in here that it's 220 days past. Past, the last line says estimated production time is 220 days after receipt of an order. If we do not have an understanding of encumbrances with our city council, this, A, it goes against our own policy. I get that. Number two, what is our understanding of encumbrances with the city? That is my concern, because we can put this in all that we want. However, if they're going to call for encumbered money at 90 days or at 120 days...
Which they will.
We are going to be stuck with a bill that we can't pay because we don't have the money to pay this bill. So that is my concern, and I will probably vote no for this because...
May I answer?
Unless there's an answer.
Yes. So the way things work with the city is that every single encumbrance that we have as of June 30 is requested for reappropriation. So as long as they agree to reappropriate the funds, we will be fine. We'll just, when it comes to the school board's policy of any POs that are still outstanding after 120 days, the school board will approve or not approve us to keep that order in.
Do we have it in writing that they are looking to reappropriate money to us?
No, but that is a part of the ordinance that they passed, that every, every funding source that's encumbered or not encumbered, that we have to request reappropriation. So we deal with that every year with anything. They have the right to say yes or no. But we are going to request every encumbrance and every dollar that's not used for reappropriation.
And what happens if they say no?
Then we will have to contact the vendor and cancel the order, because we will have a clause that says if the funding source is not available...
Non-appropriation clause?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Hear no, hear no, no more discussion. Madam clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parr.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
4.8 is consideration to purchase as a sole source the Jason Learning Experience and NVSP from Jason Learning.
Move for approval.
Okay. Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Mr. Lamb.
Yes. I noticed in the wording and so forth, the cost with this. When we had the discussion with this program before, I think this is the one where you said you, you were negotiating per student, per, were you able to get it at the amount that you had said, or what's happened, I guess?
This year, when she came, it was no charge.
Right.
So the students had access to the, to the curriculum. So the only thing that we paid for, for this year, was for the student and the teacher to participate with the Argonauts. So they will take their summer excursion in September with this program. Going forward for next year, this is for 18. The original amount was 120, but the, the reduced amount was half of that. So we're at $60,000, which also includes the, the Argonauts for the summer, for the teacher and the, and the student.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? Ms. Atkinson?
Just to, Dr. Bracy, I know we are moving forward with STEM, but are we going to invest in arts as well, this amount of money? Because, because the, the new movement is not just STEM. It's incorporating the arts with STEAM. So I don't want us to be behind enforcing public schools with the arts. So are we willing to make that same investment into the arts?
We do. We will.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
Ms. Ananamas?
The next item is under discipline, 3.1, consideration of an expulsion discipline case number 201617/37. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion? Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I make a motion to amend this motion for said student to return back to school.
Second.
All right, there's a, there is, we got to vote on the amendment first.
Right.
Correct. So the amendment would be to return the student to the school?
Back to school, yes.
Okay. All right. Motion, Madam Clark? We're voting, now we're voting on the amendment. On the amendment, okay?
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Pahren?
No.
But the amendment fails. Now the main motion is on the floor. Right. And that is the recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark, this is the original motion.
Right. We already had a motion.
Yeah, already had a motion. That's right, I'm sorry.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
No.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, it passes.
Next item is consideration of expulsion discipline case number 201617/42. The recommendation is alternative, alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
No.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of expulsion discipline case number 201617/43. Recommendation is expulsion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson, stay. Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one abstention, passes.
Okay, I'm not going to, a lot of times when a person abstains, it really is, it would be nice to know, to have a reason for, uh, why you're abstaining, but I'm not going to force the issue.
Is, is that in our bylaws?
That's in our policy.
It's policy?
It's in our bylaws.
Well, thank you for.
What's the, what's the policy?
The chair can ask, if a person abstains, the chair can ask for a reason.
Okay, is that our policy because Robert Ruse saying, saying that?
It's in our, it's in our, it's in our rules.
Okay, what's the policy number?
I'll find it and give it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's in our bylaw.
Well, thank you for clarifying because there's been a few abstentions that have happened without clarification.
I know and I have not.
So I'm wondering why this particular one is being addressed and the other ones have not been.
Okay. Next item is the consideration of expulsion case 20161744. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to be a reverend tonight.
We've already been here five and a half hours.
You're calling me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
I apologize for being presumptive for your vote, sir.
You're okay. Last, consideration of expulsion discipline case 20161745. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark?
Ms. Allen? Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming? Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pahren?
Yes.
Ms. Ananamas?
Next item is 4.9, which is discussion of the agenda review for May 25th. And you know that our meeting is going to be at Craddock Middle School, okay?
Sir? No, she's on, on the fifth.
Do you want me to read this? I'll move for German.
I mean, do y'all really want him to read this at 10:30 tonight?
Can he move for German? Wow.
We have a motion.
We still have one more item that Brittany has to discuss.
We can defer.
Move the item.
I will withdraw my second.
Thank you. On 4.9, which is the agenda review, you have it and, all right. We're going to bypass board members' reports and your subcommittee reports. And the last item will be, Ms. George is going to give a report. Oh, I'm sorry, Michaela, if you want to say something, because normally you give your report at the 25th, but do you want to say something tonight? Be my guest.
I do have something.
Good.
I've been here all this time. I would like to reiterate the proposed anti-bullying campaign. This time though, I would like to ask the board to establish an anti-bullying awareness day where students and staff would sign an anti-bullying pledge. Since October is Bullying Awareness Month, I was hoping the campaign day would be sometime in October. Prior to that, I would also like to ask the board to pass, I'm sorry, to pass an anti-bullying resolution that simply says the board will not tolerate bullying of any kind. This will hopefully encourage everyone within the school to sign the previously mentioned pledge. Although the school year is coming to a close, bullying is an ongoing concern that should be addressed as soon as possible. The passing of the resolution before the end of the 2016-2017 school year will help bring awareness to the problem and show support for the initiative and for the people being bullied. I hope I have your support. Also, I would like to acknowledge the teachers for National Teacher Week. I appreciate all the hard work and dedication.
Thank you very much, Michaela.
Thank you.
So Ms. Atkinson's hand go up and then, okay.
Dr. Bracy, I sent you something in reference to the bullying. I was wondering to piggyback off of Michaela, can we send something out to the parents, teachers about bullying and suicide? Just a general letter on the resources and where students can go if they feel like they've been bullied at school and just some support lines for suicide and send that out as a text alert. And also, again, to piggyback out off of what Michaela said, I would like to move that, make a, a motion to move that we make October, enforcing public schools bullying awareness month.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and second, that we make October, it was a date, just the month of October.
And then she wanted to, and, and then make a specific date where we would.
Sign a petition.
Sign a petition.
That'd be nice, okay.
I was going to talk about that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we draw up a motion and have it pass on the 25th?
Yes.
So it's very detailed.
So you withdraw.
Is that all right? Could you withdraw?
I withdraw my.
Well, I got to withdraw the second.
You got to withdraw the second.
Yeah.
So, Michaela, we will have a, we will have it on the agenda for the 25th.
And resolution will be included.
For record, right?